...
....................................
November thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, the Board of Aldermen met in regular session with Mayor Hewnall presiding. Alderman present Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Dot Krickser, Delmer Strange, and Ryan Mason, absent none. Mayor Hewnall called a meeting to order and gave the implication. The pledge of allegiance was recited. Minutes of the October ninth meeting were read and approved with one correction. The David Brown tractor was sold for seven hundred and fifty dollars rather than eleven, rather than one thousand one hundred dollars, and the Deutsch Alice was sold for one thousand one hundred rather than seven hundred and fifty. Minutes of the October eleventh, twenty-sixth, and thirtieth meetings were all read and approved. Under citizen comments, Echo Mendez reported that the safe stop at the community center on October thirty-first was a big success. Approximately three hundred and fifty children received treats. Echo said the Knox County Chamber of Commerce will also be sponsoring a Knox County Christmas event on Friday, December eighth. This will include a soup supper, pictures with Santa, caroling, hot chocolate, live nativity scene, craft show, and lots more. Jean Morton of four oh three North Main Street addressed the board. She reported that the condition of the lot on southwest Morgan Street where some horses are pastured has been her concern in recent months. She said this lot has been cleaned up and she appreciates that. She also noted that she doesn't feel the horses are being watered regularly and she would like the police department to check on this. Jean's other concern was the four-way stop at Jackson and Main Street. She said that many do not stop at these signs and the police department should be enforcing the ordinances. Motion was made by Rene Edwards and seconded by Delmer Strange to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Under department reports, Mayor Hewnall welcomed Joseph Dimmitt, the new superintendent of utilities. Eric said that this was the first day on the job for Joe so he would not be required to give a monthly report. Mike Wright, wastewater superintendent, met with the board, gave the board a copy of his report for October. He also reported that he had not been able to haul all the sludge but will be doing that in November if the weather holds. Ryan Bishop, chief of police, reported to the board that the horse lot on southwest Morgan Street has been cleaned up. He also reported that he has been working with a resident on First Street that has derelict vehicles and these will be moved in the near future. Ryan said some headway is being made on the building on East Lafayette Street that is falling in. Under unfinished business, Mayor Hewnall reported that all the storage buildings at the country club property have been cleaned out. Under new business, the general municipal action will be Tuesday, April third, two thousand and eighteen. Motion was made by Dot Krickser and seconded by Rene Edwards to set the filing for Tuesday, December twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, at eight a.m. through Tuesday, January sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at five p.m. The offices to be filled are mayor and one alderman for each of the three wards. Motion was made by Delmer Strange and seconded by Ryan Mason to close a portion of the meeting pursuant to six one oh point oh two one subsection three, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting a particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Roll call vote was taken. Ayes: Rene Edwards, Rick Winter, Dot Krickser, Delmer Strange, Ryan Mason. Nays: None. When the board returned to open session, motion was made by Delmer Strange and seconded by Rene Edwards to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting was adjourned.
... Anybody have any questions?
Sounds good.
So I have Kathy's collections report. She couldn't be here tonight. So for the month of November, the total collected was eighty-two thousand one hundred and twelve sixty-nine. In Water Department, water revenue was eighteen thousand seven hundred and eighty-two eighty. Deposits, five hundred and eleven sixty-four that were applied. Water penalties, two sixty-three sixty-five. Miscellaneous water charges, twenty-eight ninety-seven. Sales tax was eight hundred and fourteen dollars and twelve cents. In the Sewer Department, it was twenty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight thirty-six collected. Of that sewer revenue was twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty-four fifty-four. Lab test, four hundred and forty-three dollars. Sewer penalties, two hundred and eighty seventy-five and seven cents to sewer primacy fee. Sanitation Department, trash was thirteen thousand five hundred and eighty-seven forty-two. Trash penalties, one thirty-seven thirty. Temporary dumpsters, five hundred and thirty-one dollars. Trash stickers, a hundred and thirty-nine twenty-three. For a total of fourteen thousand three hundred and ninety-four ninety-five. And in the general fund, taxes were fifteen thousand three hundred and eight oh six. Delinquent taxes, one hundred and fourteen sixteen. Amaranui franchise, three thousand three hundred and six thirty. The telecommunications franchise, two thousand five hundred and four eighty-one. City licenses, a hundred and ninety dollars. Interest income, six sixty-seven. Tax penalties, twenty fifty-four. And we were long three, three dollars. So that's a total of twenty-one thousand four hundred and fifty-three fifty-four. Cigarette tax for the recreation fund was three hundred and twelve dollars and twenty cents. In the street maintenance, wheel tax was eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents. Rock was a hundred and twelve twenty-one. In special light, the taxes were three thousand and fifty-five dollars and seven cents. Delinquent taxes, twenty-two sixty-one. Tax penalties, four oh seven. Total of three thousand and eighty-one seventy-five. And meter deposits received, six hundred and eighty dollars. So the total was eighty-two thousand one hundred and twelve sixty-nine.
Hi, Peggy.
Good evening.
Wonderful comment here.
It is. I see Dot's got our treasures report out. So if you want to look at it and see if you have any questions first. It's all pretty routine other than we have one more coming in, that's not because of taxes. But other than that, it's pretty routine.
Any questions? Let's get to the schedule then.
So if you can move on to the budget amendments. I've got this. With the state reserve, you're not allowed to spend more money than you budgeted. So these are the areas that need to have an increase. And we're going to keep us in compliance with state laws. And see, one of the major ones is the health insurance that we just didn't, didn't allow enough for. And then in the sewer, we had more repair amendments than we had anticipated of. But that's kind of finishing up our project.
So the approved column, is that last year's budget?
That's the budget that we approved last year.
And what was spent?
And then the amended amount is what we spent plus what we anticipate spending for the month of December. Now I only make adjustments to the accounts that have gone over. So for instance, if we were looking at the police department in whole, the salaries, we haven't spent nearly as much as we had set aside. You know, we didn't, we've done free trainings and we didn't use the training money. We didn't make any of the capital outline agreement. So I don't make any of those, drop anything down. I just do the ones, just to keep us in compliance with the reserve standards.
Somebody's a total to help to be criminal.
For all of them?
Yeah.
I didn't figure a total.
I just figured you did.
No, I just did it by thumb.
Okay, that's fine.
When we're talking about a million dollar budget, I just figured it wasn't million plus. I figured it wasn't, because it wasn't enough.
I will make a motion to amend the budget for the year two thousand and seventeen.
One second.
All in favor? Everybody? So it shall be. All right.
Okay, I'm going to kind of abbreviate the budget tonight because you've all been through this before. But that doesn't mean if you have a question, we won't answer it. But things are basically pretty consistent. If you jump over to page four, we'll just do a real quick summary. As in the past, I'm very conservative on the revenue coming in and aggressively on the expenditures because the expenditures are where we have issues. You know, as far as you can't spend money until you've got a budgeted. So in the general fund, even though I budgeted a deficit where the expenditures are more than the revenue. So you see the projected expenditures at almost two hundred and fifty thousand and the revenues at two hundred and twelve thousand in that first column. Generally speaking, by the time we get to the end of the year, we're just about break even in that fund. A little over, a little less, but it just pretty, it stays pretty close. But because I budget the way I do, that's why it looks that way. The top row for all of our governmental funds, which are basically supported by taxes and things that we don't have a lot of control over as far as increases. The street fund, which is the next one, is even though the revenues are showing to be more than the, of one hundred and twenty-two two thirty-five or more than the expenditures of one twenty-one forty each year. I have only budgeted thirty-five thousand dollars in street materials. And that, that will not be adequate. So we know it will be more than that, but until we get a plan in place, it's kind of hard to know what we're not going to have. Recreation fund, I, whatever the revenue comes in, that's kind of what I budget is, expenditures, because anything over that is going to have to come out of the general fund. Special light fund, we've got the same thing, projected revenues of twenty-eight, projected expenditures of twenty-eight. That is with us transferring twelve thousand five hundred dollars from the general fund to cover it. So the last two years, we've gotten by with six thousand transfer when it comes right down to it. We're hoping that when we get all the LED lights changed, then maybe we can get that along closer. But if not, at some point, we're going to have to deal with an increase in that fund to cover the utilities. Because that's all we're paying out of there, these utilities. The capital improvement fund is where we buy the major purchases for, for the governmental funds. And it's doing well, it's healthy. And we are projecting expenditure to be less than what the revenues are. The proprietary funds at the bottom. Our water and sewer, when you look at that, it looks like our expenditures are more than our revenues. But when we look at the detail, you'll see that's because we've got a hundred thousand dollars set aside for the water tower, which makes it look like we're spending more, but it's in capital outlay, so it's not an issue. And the funds are there to cover that. Water sewer, depreciation replacement fund is the transfer we have to make to meet a bond. And we're not taking anything out of that. The bond reserve, the money that's coming in there is just the interest on the account. It's fully funded, so we don't have to put anything else in it. Meter deposits are what they are. Sanitation, we're still doing well in that fund. We do have increases for rental charges, but at this time, we're still headed out of the funds to cover that and still be setting aside money for replacing trash trucks and so forth. So when you go on from there, you're going to have the detail of everything. Revenues are pretty consistent. We go on to page six. You'll see I highlighted the special light fund. We'll go to the capital outlay here and then we'll add some orange color. But those are the, that, and we had the increase in the E nine one one cost this year, which we'll be discussing later in the meeting. So that's been budgeted. The street materials on page seven. I told you we're only going to pay five thousand. We know that one will be larger. No, no, that, that won't be, but as we get a plan in place, then we'll have to go back and make changes and possibly take some of that out of the capital improvement fund. But we'll evaluate that as, as we get a plan in place. Be nice if we could find some grant funds that would be, you know, things a section of streets with the sidewalks, you know, so we could do a complete project in sections. I keep hoping. If you go on to page eight, you'll see the transfer coming in for the special light fund. I highlighted the capital outlay on the bottom, also the capital improvement fund. Most of the revenues are pretty consistent, that's why I've had a lot with those. And then if you go on to page ten, we've got the capital outlay of a hundred thousand, which is going to be kind of set aside money for the water tower. And the water behind that is going to run, but we know it's going to be expensive. And then the gray section is our, our bond, meet our bond requirements. And then the capital outlay of sixteen thousand. Sewer, there's some things we need to do in the sewer. Page eleven is your sanitation fund, which is doing fine. Page twelve is just our assessed evaluation, how that comes through on taxes. And then your last page is related to managing the budget for wages. A basic summary of that is we have four full-time people that have been here a year. And we know we can't do a whole lot, but I put in fifty cents an hour increase for those four individuals that have been here. The other one that the police chief said he had visited with you about is, he has two officers that have been here a while that work, one of them is essentially full-time hours, the other one is twenty-four hours a week that he said he can depend upon, he can count on, they're going to be there when he needs them. And he would like to see them rewarded by offering them paid time off. The cost to the city for each of those would be about a thousand dollars a year. So that is in the budget. So those are the salary findings to discuss. Everybody else who's been here less than a year has already come in and agreed. We have one reserve officer that's inactive and will be for a while. And then the other one is just coming in on hours.
Yeah, one, one year.
And so that's what's in the budget. If you go backwards to page two. In the middle, we discussed the capital outlay. It's kind of highlighted through the detail we just went through. But in the operating fund, we have a twenty-plus year old copier that needs replaced for the city. We had budgeted a computer for the police department last year that didn't get spent, so it's still in there. Because theirs is probably going to crash at some point, it's getting some age on it. In the capital improvement fund, we have a forty thousand dollar tractor from Melinda Ryder Gray. And I think Joe will be presenting information to you for that. So a computer for him with software, printer, so forth. And then a trailer for transporting the skid motor. So those are the things that we've got in the capital improvement fund. The work on the water tower is in the water. And then in the sewer fund, these are kind of estimated amounts, but these are things that are needed to be done. They're retrofitting the old pumps and they were saying they found most of the parts and pieces, so it may not be that much, but we're allowing that. Lab equipment, we don't have an exact amount on, but we're estimating there. We've got some wiring issues with the lift station and that may not be enough, that gives us a... And then a UV system update, which has been put off for about a year now. So those are all things that are probably going to be needed done this year. And then in the sanitation fund, two more, we are downstairs. We had talked about city hall repairs, police department repairs last year. My understanding is we can not get a bid on that, so those are not in the budget.
Anybody have any questions?
I think we need to do some city hall. Or building, skin patching.
Before it gets more expensive.
I'm in agreements.
The only problem is going to be prevailing wage, isn't it?
If it's, it depends on what we end up with. If it's maintenance, I think you're okay. I think it would be, and we'll have to watch that pretty close to make sure we're complying with regulations. But hopefully, it's just going to be a repair. It might be an expensive repair, but hopefully, it's just a repair. Until we know what's wrong. And how much damage there is, we don't want to know. But I think we're okay.
Do you think we need quick budget tightening now?
Well, it's kind of hard since we don't know what we're doing.
So you'd rather do an amendment then?
I think we'll just amend once we, we still need to get the ball moving, but, but...
I need the budget for an orange and a banana. Little worse, flame and dirt. All right. Any other questions?
Paid time off. If the police officer, how much is that? Last time you got four one?
Ten days.
Ten days.
And we're calling it paid days off, not sick or vacation. They can use it however they need to use it.
I just think city hall something's need. Late check in too.
That was something we were going to bring up and later in the meeting, whatever.
Lighting too at the firehouse?
Oh, yes, we're, Morton's asking me about lighting at the firehouse needs updated inside.
Okay.
Did you hear any estimates on the lighting?
Yeah, it's coming about a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a light for the T fives. But they will come on in the cold weather. I have knocked out over there to count how many they have or to see what we can do to change it. What you have out there is a P twelve's. And there's long strip lights and the T fives at a certain height, you can replace more and they're more efficient too. They're brighter.
They think they need it brighter.
Well, you need something that's going to kick on. At forty degrees, if you keep it forty degrees in there, these will kick on like that. Where the T twelve's, it takes a few lights.
So ballpark, what are you looking at?
Again, without counting the exact lights, I don't know which. Might as well figure out two, two hundred and fifty dollars a fixture, bulbs and everything.
I don't know. I'd guess at least ten.
We'll go by and count them. I'll get back with you later, Peggy.
So amend it later?
Yeah. But it is something that needs to be addressed because I think you know what half the lights were.
Ken, Ryan, you want to go look at, could Ryan go look at them right quick for you?
We can do that later. We don't have to amend it anyway, don't we? Can we amend?
We, yes, we can amend it at any point, so that would be fine. Because we're going to...
If we do that, maybe we can, I can sweep off and we can, we can do it. Set up the vibe bolt. And get more cheaper than the entire, sweep top and tell them to trip. All the entire apartment may be cheap yet.
I talked to somebody, a police officer. They was talking about flashlight things, got these flashlights and some uniform coats. Because I'm not on the uniform coat floor to wear outside. They just had the own jacket, but have a coat that has a police officer's logo. I mean, something makes it be more professional. So be uniformed probably.
And that's part of the...
Yeah, I mean, they, they can, they can order that. But they have, they have. About how the order for, for the policy is, that they take half of this.
Oh, we're talking about for the police.
Yeah.
The city place half of those. They can order me to.
Because that'll kind of fall under supplies.
See the match, make a motion to approve the proposed budget.
Did somebody make a motion?
No.
Not yet. I won't do that. I make a motion to approve the proposed budget for the year two thousand and eighteen.
What are your monthly bills? Everybody's gonna have a chance to plan for the monthly bills. You have to jump out at anything? Brand new. Yeah. We will, we'll board that about it later on here.
Want to make a motion to pay the bills?
I will pay. Everybody, pay the bills. Citizens' comments.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak at your meeting tonight and be here. Also, I want to thank you for fixing the chug holes in the, the chug holes in, in the driveway and in front of the blue box. I had several positive comments about that, and I'm remiss of getting to you and letting you know, I do appreciate that. And of course, I'm here for another concern. I'm here to ask for the help in solving the parking problem that occurs when the food pantry is active. Every month, I have, I receive complaints from my customers who come to the post office, because my parking lot is usually full, from the customers at the food pantry. I have been over there and talked to them several times. They put up signs in there and tried to let the customers that they're having know that they shouldn't be parking over there, but I've also bought signs and had them placed around there also. Tollway zones, and it's for postal proper, or for postal customers to come. The problem is, when the customers come, if they've got big packages, they have to park clear to the east end of the parking lot. They have to pack, carry those packages all the way up through there, even if they're running in for a quick minute to get their mail. They've gotta come all that way because there's cars parked there from the food pantry. They also have people that park in our handicapped area. And I have been out there several times, and, and if I get a minute, I don't just stand there at the window and look, but if I get a minute, I do go out and ask people to move, or even my employees have done that a time or two. If they'll be out there, they'll say, hey, you can't park there, and most people move. There are some people that get mad and irritated, and this last time I was over there, I went over and, and asked that we, you know, maybe announce again that the customers need to maybe move their cars and stuff, and I was told that, basically, that was my problem, or that's the way I felt like I was told. I was also told that my customers park on their side of the street, which their side of the street is a public street. My parking lot is a private parking lot for the post office. I think I've been very patient in all this, and I haven't towed anybody yet. I do not want to have to tow anybody, if I can keep from it. I, I'm at a loss at what to do anymore. Plus, my dander got up just a little bit when I was called names the other day, that just didn't set well me at all. And then also, there, they have traffic cones that are set up there. So, and I don't know if they came to you to ask about that or not, but I've not said anything. They've been up for several months, and that is part of my route for one of my carriers. And so now they have to deviate, make a big circle down around and come back in the other way off the highway, which isn't as safe for them, but they do it, and I've not complained. I just would like to, to see if we can't get something taking care about that. I do have a customer that lives down there in East Morgan, and that's why they have to go down there. From, you know, you have to get it from that side of the street, I can't just not have them get it from that side of the street. So, I guess I'm just here to ask if there's something that you guys can help me do, you have any suggestions? You know, I think, I've tried to do everything I could do, I've ordered the signs, I've had them put up, short of towing them, which I know will get me some really nasty names, but anyway, is there any way you can do tickets, or?
I think police presence, maybe you tell a few of them and eventually get around.
Well, I've told them.
I think we need to post, post something in the paper from here for the next several weeks, you know? That they're not supposed to park there. And then, I don't know if we can, you know, a flyer to give out to each person.
Take into their groceries.
Yeah, every time, each person that signs up at the, at the, I don't know where they sign up, the counter or whatever, that they get a notice that they're not supposed to park.
I do know they have signs up inside the building.
Well, I mean, but if each person gets one, then there's no, no.
And then they'll be fined or towed away.
And I think, you know, for the next several weeks until the next food pantry day, we need to run it in the paper, and I'm sure Echo will put it on our social media sites. And if we, and if we even have somebody.
First Friday of every month, I think.
Unless there's not a Thursday of that.
Police presence would probably be good.
I was gonna say.
You know, like Friday was the first, so it wasn't on the first.
If we have to set up there, we will.
No, I agree with you, Teresa, I, I go there, and there's always, everyone's parked in the post office, and that's not right. But I don't know what, I'd like to help you, I don't know how that.
And Reagan's, we'll just be up there next, next time.
Yeah, that would help, I'm sure.
I think the presence of it would be a little bit.
Yeah, I know that, having them put, give a piece of paper to everybody who goes through, and I'm, I've never seen a sign inside there that says, don't park in the, um, post office parking lot, but.
I've never really noticed the sign either.
So, I mean, it sure wouldn't hurt having a sign like on the door somewhere visible before they even go in that says, make sure your car's not parked over there, type of thing.
If you're parked in the post, go move it now, or you'll not be served, you know, I mean, it, it, it kind of falls back to the, the food pantry needs to kind of step up for, be responsible for their actions too, I mean, they're, you know, and as far as the cones, I know when they moved over there, John Bodie was sitting here, and he was part of that, and he asked for a set of cones from the city, and that they were gonna close that street that day. And the city council and the police chief at the time said that would be no problem if it was just one day a month. So, I do know that they did get permission from us.
For safety reason too, I think.
I think because of the elder, you know, I mean, so I do know that they did get permission from the city to do that once a month. But I, you know, as far as the problem that they're having, I mean, I think maybe the city, maybe Mr. Bishop or somebody can maybe have a talk with the higher-ups at the food pantry and say, hey, we're having a, you know, a legitimate problem, and, and we need you to step up for this, you know, or we're gonna have to, you can't close this street down anymore, you're gonna have to start making sure the routes are open, you know, we're trying to be, we're all trying to play a game here, but, you know, we have to open this street up and everything. If they're gonna be parked in that parking lot over there, there's no reason for this street to be closed. Maybe get a little more action out of that, too.
And I think a note in their bags, their boxes.
Yes, everyone should get one.
'Cause I think put them on the door, they're all in a hurry to get in there to, to get it first. And they're cold, and they're not gonna worry about what that sign says on the door.
The people that, can I just ask, the people that are, are working there.
Go move it, or you don't get what you need.
I think some of the problem is they're parking where some of their customers park too. Is there any way that, that that could be? I mean, if they're closing that one street, they've got the permission to do that, can't they? Couldn't they park in there?
But we can't.
Most of them park there, most of the volunteers do park in that closed street. But we did have one volunteer that parked right there in the corner, that was a bad spot. And, and like you say, it took one of the people going to it's place because the volunteer was parking there. So, I think they got that taken care of. I also volunteer there.
Yeah, I just noticed that sometimes they park over, like in front of the Methodist church.
Yes.
And walk across. But then that's where it seems like some of the customers park, and I didn't know if you could get more of them in an angle in there where the car.
A lot of them go down that hill and park there too. I think the volunteers need the carpool too.
It's an extreme.
Put down on the cars.
You know, I mean, it's terrible that day, but.
Yeah, and there just isn't any parking over there, it's just all.
Absolutely, yeah, that's the problem.
We'll try to explore every avenue that the older men have expressed, and we'll do our best.
Okay, could somebody let me know what you decide, because?
Mr. Bishop will be giving a contact.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I need to ask for the Blue Room to be open later on, noon to eight. Start twelve, one thirty to one thirty, it's on, it's on Sunday. And, uh, orders, um, midnight on a Sunday to Thursday.
Yeah, and they usually grant that just for all the liquor establishments that want to be open.
So, let's go ahead and round for both. Can we just do it for both?
Isn't it, what about Lucky's? I don't know.
Citywide.
I'll make the motion, allow the bars in town to stay open till one thirty.
All in favor? Or? Any other citizen comments? Moving on to department reports, Mr. Denny.
Okay. I went back through some of the stuff I had written down for the last month, and just kind of hit some of the high spots. Deb did get her CDL, she's got that completely done, she's legally driving the truck. Uh, we repaired the box culvert on eight hundred East Morgan, built a new grating for the top of it, done away with all the stuff that was falling in, so that nobody can fall in there and get hurt. We sat and removed four construction dumpsters this month. We had a new employee, Jason Bell, started on the twentieth. He already has his CDL permit stuff taken care of. He's gotta wait fourteen days, and he can take his driving test, try and get everybody on the road. So, we put a road tube in on Elm Street for Jim Rudisol. We got the Christmas lights up, thanks to Mike's help. And got the country club all winterized, cleaned some of it up. Uh, we've cleaned up some of the sheds, built locks for the doors, and we're storing some equipment in the sheds. So, all the mowers and stuff are put up for the winter in their own sheds. Freed up some other room for some more equipment to be inside, so that we don't have nice equipment just sitting out over the winter. We've done some service work on the trucks and stuff, some oil changes and stuff that were way overdue. All the snow removal equipment is in working order, except for one spreader, parts have been ordered. I was called today from Nap High, they're in the mail. So, we should have them by midweek, I'll have the spreader fixed. As far as I know, that's all the snow equipment ready to go. We've done some ditch, ditch burning and some road tube cleaning and brush removal. We have a short list of some road tubes that need some more work after we got them cleaned out and burned out. See that they need some drainage repair. And we repaired some washed out, couple washout spots at LJ's driveway and the, the northwest corner of the Sail Barn parking lot, where the road tubes are short and their driveways are just kind of falling off into the ditch. So, we dug the material back out of the ditch and put it in the drive, back in the driveways, and put some bigger shot rock around the ends of the tube, and maybe, maybe it'll hold its own. So, that's kind of all I've got for this month. If there's anything else you guys would like to know for the next report, or want me to touch base on, let me know, seeing as this was my first time. And next month, we just, like I said, we've got our list of some ditch repair if the weather holds out, and ready for some winter weather, I guess.
Are you gonna discuss the lift station that you're hanging around, or the new one, the repairs?
Yes, I'm hanging around.
Okay, you're gonna be, we'll talk about that later?
It's fine, it's fine, yeah. I think we've kind of got a little bit of a game plan.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, great.
I don't really have anything for you. I did have to have, I don't know if the bill was in there from Mr. Johnson, did he send you a bill yet?
Yes.
Okay. That was just one of the three phase wires that went to that south clarifier, was, it just burned up. I don't know, I don't have any reasoning for it. It's not one of the ones that we replaced in our rewiring, obviously, but looking back, it was redone when we did the clarifiers. So, I don't know, we, when Chuck pulled that through there, we pulled in like five spares. He said that when Brad was there, he said for some reason, there's something in that conduit, that he says every once in a while, about every two or three years, he has a wire or tube burn up in there. So, we've got a few spares if we need them. But other than that, the plant's running just like it always does. We're down in flow, thirty percent of our design flow. But other than that, unless you have any questions for me.
Did you get your sledge hole cut up?
I, I didn't, I, I decanted a bunch of water off of it, and I, I'm, if it stays where it's not wet here, we can get some of it done, but I, I'm in good shape, I've got two empty tanks, basically two empty tanks.
So, are you gonna be getting the sledge truck back in storage?
It's, it's in storage right now.
Okay, good, because it's sit out a lot this year.
It, it's back in.
Okay.
Now.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping in and helping us with that, Mike.
Thank you.
All righty, Mr. Bishop.
I didn't get them put in your stack.
Can I have one of those?
What's that? A couple things I wanted to talk about, the training for reserve guys. It wasn't clear what the city does actually pay towards the training, if they have to provide, I mean, they pay all for full-time, but they don't, it's really not clear what our reserve officers, if the city pays all their training, or they pay half, or pay in full.
So, we had a request from one of our reserve officers a few years ago, and that time, we paid half. Okay, cause it's not, not their time spent there, I mean, they couldn't turn that into salary, but like the cost of the course, like if it's a two hundred dollar course at Macon, the city paid a hundred dollars.
And I think the reason we chose the half is because he also is billed in the county, is that right, Margaret?
That officer did, yes.
Yeah, and see, I think, doesn't, officer paid in the county, so it all, he didn't.
No.
And he works four time hours too.
Yeah, but he's not a full-time officer.
Yeah.
He did work part-time.
So, what are you anticipating for classes?
Um, I mean, it just kind of depends on what, what you do, I mean, right now, the sheriff's location, you can take everything online through the end of the year, you know, and free. But I don't anticipate that probably for next year. But we didn't know what.
Yeah, there was a class at La Grange.
And then there's a, there's a couple classes at La Grange, I think Mike wants to go to.
Yeah, and that's what brought this up, Mike had asked me, he was interested in this.
And we've got enough, you know, we've got enough money in our training fund right now to pay for Mike and. And we've got enough, you know, we've got enough money in our training fund right now to pay for Mike and.
They're bored more several times, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
But there again, I thought, okay, so, did I say yes, the city will pay half? I kept wondering what the cost of the class was for La Grange. So through the Sheriff's, go ahead, Margaret. I know we don't pay a hundred percent because obviously that's the full time officers that get that. So through the Sheriff's Association, is there anything our guys can be taking now before the end of the year?
Yeah.
In that program?
Yeah.
That's free?
Yeah.
And you don't, it's gonna be available next year?
I don't know that, I don't know that it is. I know, I know it was available for this.
Is any of them taking advantage of it right now?
They should be, I told, I told them about it.
Are they?
I think David is. But I mean, what the deal was, there's a class coming up in La Grange, that Mike wanted to go to.
Something he was interested in, yeah.
And we didn't know if he was supposed to pay half or the full amount or the city pay all of it or, it really, it's really not clear what.
I just know in the past we paid half on the part, on the part time. So, I think that's fine, I mean, with a simple amount.
Um, any question on uh, paid time off?
Uh, is it ten?
Ten days each.
Ten days and it's, it's paid time off or personal days or whatever they wanna call it.
Yes.
Uh, vacation or sick leave, so.
So they just need to work with you and make sure they plan ahead?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, cause right now, if they have a doctor appointment or some family emergency or, I mean, or anything, anytime they need any time off, they're pretty much penalized and don't get paid and I think they've been here long enough. You know, they don't get any other benefits, so I think that's the most economical way to go rather than, yeah.
Should we make that where it's only available after a certain amount of time working for the city?
Um, I think that's what we had discussed before. And uh, you know, um, we uh, I've read how we had it discussed it before. Um, I think it was twenty-four hours, I mean, you have to be consistently, I mean, not just, you, you know, if you work one shift every two weeks, get ten days, you know, paid time off, but you have to work, you know, at least twenty hours for, you know, specified amount of years.
So this is the reserve officers, if they work at least twenty hours a week or a shift or a twenty?
Is twenty hours a week?
Yeah, it's like a.
Well, Mike, Mike works twenty-four every two weeks, three day, three shifts.
Yeah, he works twenty-four in a week.
Yeah.
We have one reserve officer that only works one shift in two weeks.
So essentially, I mean, this.
See, that's what I was thinking, twenty-four hours a week, that's what I'm thinking. Instead of twenty, that's exactly right.
Yeah, twenty-four, look, that's what Mike makes, I like that.
Twenty's considered a part time position.
Yeah.
So make it, if they make twenty-four, if they work twenty-four hours.
Does the point, have he done way more hours to you, will you be able to?
I don't know, I think he, you know, I've tried it on him a few times, I've given seven or something going on.
How old is he else, is he doing? Oh, he does it now, he did, what, Green City or Green Castle, for a long time.
Green City.
Green City, okay, I knew somewhere.
If you don't have any questions about all of that. And like the, the food pantry thing, we'll, we'll be up there next time, I don't know, I'll probably pull in one of the other guys and two, be up there and watch and if we don't have something worked out by then, you know, we'll get a plan together and get something done, get that taken care of. Thank God it's only once a month.
I'll be ones off on that.
Yeah. Do you all wanna come up there?
Yes, sir.
All right, we uh, have up two cars on Jack Chan.
Um, I've been working with him, I know that we've been over there and tried to jumpstart his vehicles for him to get him, you know, at least moved, you know, kinda got it step by step. Uh, David went over there and neither one of them, they could get him running. Uh, he's got, went down to COF, he's got their jumper pack and it's not working and he's having a hard time getting anything done, he did come to City Hall, he talked to me and make sure that, you know, I knew that he wasn't ignoring, ignoring us, you know, and he really is working on it, so we're still, I need to go make a visit with him probably tomorrow and kinda get, you know, get a plan, see what he's, what he's got in mind. I mean, I'd, I'd rather him come and tell me, he knows that he's working on it, not ignoring it, rather than a lot of people just not do nothing and
And that's not the only.
Be ignored.
That's not the only vehicles we've been working with.
No, and the other ones are, they're getting cleaned up a little bit little. Anything else?
Finished business. Joe and the crew have uh, winterized it, we're done for the season unless somebody wants to rent it. We've had nobody come in and work on it. So it's still unfinished business. Um, I have had some reviews that had had some community service, I've been using them, community service out there overseeing them, cutting down dead trees, nags, pile brush, et cetera, et cetera.
No, we're working right.
They weren't supposed to do that either, but we did get that taken care of, so. Thank goodness, crew answered the phone, didn't have to call everybody else, so. Uh, the lease agreement from USB, for the town, more terrible than one.
Yeah, nothing, yeah, posters, still paying.
Yep, applicants for that, seeing the demo grant, we received the three, they're closing it out for this year anyway.
Right, that's what I'm saying, the end of the year now.
We need to be proactive with uh, our wards. See people on the streets mentioning it. If anybody asks us about it, why we haven't got it, well, nobody signed up for it, the three people. That's, being in unfinished business, as I was a paper, new business is a proposed ordinance number seven hundred to put a local use tax issue on April third ballot, that may seem to be all of a package. This is the internet sales tax bill. Do we just try to send this through, what we sent it up to? This has one up tomorrow, Lee, how?
I don't know.
Do we have to vote on it?
Well, yeah, the, the city has to pass the ordinance before we can actually send it up there beyond the ballot. And Tom was to check the firm, he didn't get back to you with anything, so I assumed it meant we could approve it.
Okay, so we need to vote on this, make all of our local.
This is what we talked about, you know, for several months in time. I hear on the news, I think the city of Paris is gonna have it on the ballot.
We didn't get this on the last ballot because we didn't wanna pay the money for.
Right, that's why I was trying to put it off.
Let's go ahead and put it on this one and just have a motion.
Most cities in the area have already
Adopted.
adopted it, you know, like Memphis or Hattler or, you know.
Makes the local guy have a closer even playing their playground.
What is it?
In years to come, I gave you a copy, right?
Yeah, but I don't really get it, I mean.
Basically, we're just not getting the sales tax.
Yeah, with the sales tax, our sales tax revenue in years to come will be going down because we won't be getting everybody that shops online with, you know, as Walmart's starting to do online sales.
It's basically online sales tax is what it is.
Okay.
And everybody does, everywhere else, we're just finally getting it around to adopting it.
Is there any kind of like simpler language? Cause I mean, what part of this is gonna be on, oh, sorry.
Alrighty.
I have a motion we.
Ordinance number seven hundred.
I still don't.
Yeah, I'm hoping you can read something. I was gonna say, we have copies available for all the public.
An ordinance opposing the use of sales tax rate of one percent for the finish, restoring, using or consuming within the city, we deny that. Any article that stands on personal property percent, not afforded granted by the subject. To the provision, sections one, four, four point six hundred, three, one, four, four point seven, six, one, RSMO, providing for the use of tax to be repealed. Produced or raised in the same round as any city sales taxes, repealed, reduced, raised, providing for this emission. And the proposal of qualified voters of the city to be denied after their approval to this amendment. Called and to be held in the city on the April third, two thousand eighteen. Reformed, valid to be deployed at said election. And American City Court to do all things called for by law and connection with the holding at said election. Who wants to motion that? Who wants to take that? All the things, everyone.
It's the bill number seven hundred two, Mark.
Yeah.
Alright, move on to call share, county commission for the answer, nine one one, this is better services. Um, I want to have Mister Bishop see how much we're using it personally over the else. Like I had said, I guess they, when we got our two thousand dollars back from the bridge, they have sent something for us to sign. If you guys would allow me to have a time to do, we will look into it.
My other concern is, Martin's received a letter from Sheriff Becker trying to get in nine one one into the county. I don't know how long you'll ever be, they not have meeting yet, so we don't wanna get signed up in too much of a contract. I know it says you can get out of it. I'd be a little weary.
I don't think you'll ever pull that off.
Should never have been lost to start with.
Should have never been lost to start with, I'm not disagreeing, I'm definitely out here disagreeing with this. The initial three quarters of a million dollars we gave up.
Is that how much? They have no need, so I didn't.
Ask them.
I know that Mike was leaving about it. I see we'll get locked up in that, something.
We will, we have to vote for it. And I don't see a real problem, so. Alrighty, we will table that.
And it doesn't have to be done by the fifth year, because we have to pay them when they fill us. And I can probably take those in more, if we feel like we're filled, the place that says that in there.
Can I have a copy of that contract?
Sure.
Not right this second, it's okay, we'll just layer on tomorrow.
That is gonna be the case there, and any alderman comments?
Yes, uh, I think we need to have a safety dinner meeting, we can use to do.
Safety dinner?
A safety meeting.
You have to look like I'm the one to take it away.
I think it just kinda, that's sort of the roadblock, it's kind of a god.
I've done that for a while.
Two years.
We've never had one, it's not happened yet.
Yeah, two years. We haven't done it.
We haven't done it.
Alright, since you opened the floodgate, what day, what time?
Well, it's too late, it's this year, we need to act first year, why don't we, you know, wait, talk about our next year.
Yeah.
Part of it, there's a blast of them, but.
Well, I don't know.
Well, you know, it's Tom's birthday.
Alrighty.
Well, next year is January eighth, right?
Are you booked in January yet, right? Not see, huh? Although that's our city council, we got it, so.
Check, actually, I thought it was. Alrighty, any more alderman comments?
Um, this is just a thought, I don't know, I know the water tower's bad because I don't mention this.
Year and a half ago.
Year ago, whenever. But is it, I see towers look a heck of a lot worse than ours. I'm wondering if it's something we can put off another year and spend some money on the streets, since they're so bad, our streets. Is that something the tower can put off?
That money.
Yeah.
Put that money that we get to work, yeah.
You gotta stay in that department?
I know, but God, we need them streets fixed.
Yep, we're working on it, Joe's coming up with a plan as we speak.
Okay, okay.
Oh. Alright, any more alderman comments?
Nope, I'll be quiet.
Alright, we'll move into the part of the meeting where Echo goes home. Six, ten, point zero, two, one. Hiring, firing, disciplinary action promoting of particular employees by the public, nobody. Personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Who would make a motion to go in closed session?
Delmer.
Yeah.
Seconded by?
Brian.
Margot Horn. Uh, Rick.
Yeah.
Name, Brian.
Yep.
Doc.
Us.
Delmer.
Yeah.
We're in closed session.